Okay, well, it is 2:31, so I will call the meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. Could I have a motion for the adoption of remote participation?
We have a quorum?
We do. We have five out of eight.
So moved.
Second.
Um, let's do our roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yes? Steve, you're up next.
Hey, I'm only, I'm not counting up. Okay, I'm not getting the quorum on, on the screen, but okay. Uh, Steve will do.
There are five.
Okay, who am I missing? Okay, Steve will do. Concord, yes.
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes.
Um. Jeff, we can't hear you. While Jeff is working on his sound, why don't we go to Alice and then back to Erica or doing um adoption of remote participation?
Alice Lucresta, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
And Jeff, do we have sound?
Just give us a thumbs up, Jeff.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, Jeff's still in need of, yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Um, and we do know that um Judy and Michael were not able to join us tonight. Um, Dr. Dawson, do we have any public comment for tonight's meeting?
She is on mute.
Oh.
Yes, I just wanted to do another double, double, last minute double check, but um good evening. At this time, we do not have any public comment.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to review the consent agenda. I will go through all the items. If anyone would like to hold an item, just, you know, speak up um to hold it, and then we will um review it as we get to that item on the agenda. So the consent agenda consists of approval of draft minutes of October 11th, 2022, approval of the Skills USA Fall State Leadership Conference, prior year invoice approval, approval of the list of monthly grants, and approval of the list of monthly donations.
Question on the last two items, did we receive those? I don't, didn't see them in the packet. Did I miss them?
Yeah.
They, they were included in the packet.
Yeah, I thought they were in the packet.
No. Was more than one cup version of the packet sent at some point?
Yes.
Ah, okay. I might be looking at the wrong one.
Okay, um, I believe they're in the um, and um, please tell me if this is the right, the one, right packet that they are in that is um titled 1115 2022 Superintendent's Updated Packet. Is that what you're looking at, Jeff?
No, Superintendent's Updated Packet. Let me check.
I'm just going.
Superintendent's Update and Packet?
I believe they were in this. Can someone just confirm? I'm actually, of course, right now that I'm looking for it, I don't see it, but I do believe that they were in this packet.
Somebody could say what page it was on.
Yeah, can anyone find the page?
I'm looking for it. Oh, wait a minute.
Prior years notices invoices you're looking for?
No, it's the grants and donations.
Yeah, I've got. Oh.
Yeah. Unless I just thought that they were there. Um.
I'll send those to you again, Jeff.
Okay, and um related to that, on the um Skills USA is there, was there a particular item here we were supposed to take a vote on that was uh mentioned? Because I didn't see anything for a particular vote on that in the packet either. I know that we had a little presentation about it, but I didn't see there was a particular vote for us to take.
Because it is an overnight trip, we just needed um school committee approval.
Okay, so it's, so that item is school committee approval for the overnight trip for, okay.
Correct.
I'll set with that.
Okay.
The other thing I can't vote on.
Right, at this point, let's hold the approval of the um monthly grants and monthly donations. And um we can take those up when we're under the finance report, but at this point, um if we can have a motion for approval on the consent agenda for the draft minutes of October 11th, um approval for the Skills USA Fall Leadership Conference Trip and prior year invoice approval.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, let's do our roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Or do Concord, yes?
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes.
Jeff's still in need of, yes.
Alice Lucresta, yes.
Okay, thank you. Um. Does anyone have anything they would like to add for the good of the organization? No. One of the things I'd like to remind school committee members is that what we often do in the fall is um each of our committees, they um develops a set of goals for that committee. And we're a little delayed in doing this, but I would like to ask each of our committees if you could meet before the next school committee and um have a um draft goals for uh your committee so that we can consider them at the um December school committee meeting. So, any questions on that? Okay. We have our um, our district treasurer with us today, and if there are no objections, I'd like to take the treasurer's report out of order. Are there any objections to doing so? If not, let's move to item 10B Treasurers Report. And Laurie, welcome.
Thank you very much. I hope everyone can hear me. I had some problems. Well, good, okay, because I've had problems with this before. I just wanted to make sure. Okay, so um, thank you for the opportunity to speak before the school committee this evening as a way of introduction. Uh, my name is Laurie Elliott, and I've been your part-time treasurer for Minuteman since 2013. Uh, my full-time position is Finance Director for the Greater Lawrence Sanitary District in North Andover, and I've held that position for over 20 years. I've served in several municipal finance positions throughout my career, including North Andover's Town Accountant. As treasurer, I manage the district's accounts with Eastern Bank, the Massachusetts Municipal Depository Trust, or MMDT, which is an arm of the State Treasurer's Office, Cambridge Savings Bank, Unibank, and Vanguard. My daily responsibilities include working with the business office, making all weekly deposits, and initiating transfers to fund your school warrants and entering those transfers into the general ledger. As treasurer, I maintain the school's cashbook. I reconcile all your bank accounts um to the banking module in Infinite Visions, and I work with the business office team and the superintendent on any items that need to be posted, such as interest income and wires directly into your bank accounts. Um, according to the FDIC, the national average interest rate currently stands at around 3.03 APY, and this parallels to the interest rates the school is currently earning on its accounts. Receipts have been steady into your various bank accounts. Assessments to communities are steadily flowing into the district just district schools' accounts and are all deposited. At all state aid and grants are wired into the MMDT investment account. The MMDT, as I stated, is the banking vehicle used by the state of Massachusetts to distribute local aid and all grant funds. Monies from this account are transferred over to Eastern Bank to fund operations as needed. The school currently has an adequate cash balance on hand to handle our immediate cash flow requirements. There is a new account in Eastern Bank, as suggested by our auditors, which we opened up recently for student fundraising efforts. That's now been segregated as its own account. Our account with Unibank is used to segregate bond proceeds from operating funds. When a school building warrant needs to be paid, funds are transferred from Unibank over to the Eastern Bank Accounts payable fund to pay, to pay those invoices. The most challenging account to manage that I manage is the Vanguard OPEB account. Investing at this level is a specialized area of finance. Um, the school committee voted to have the treasurer manage the school's OPEB funds and directed the balance in the MMDT bond portfolio we transferred to Vanguard Brokerage Services. The funds were transferred in 2019 into Vanguard Index Funds designated by the school committee. The treasurer must follow the investment policy set forth by the school committee that allows investments into the following: Vanguard Total Stock Market Index Funds, Vanguard Total International Stock Index Fund, and the Vanguard Total Bond Market Index Fund. Um, the asset allocation is a target of 70% stock and 30% bond and equivalents. The stock portfolio is a combination of both domestic and international index funds, and I periodically initiate transactions to adjust the ratios to reflect the policy as the school committee has written. I would offer this as my report to the school committee, and I thank you very much for the opportunity to speak before you.
Well, thank you very much for joining us tonight and for your report. I will open it up to the school committee for any questions. Jeff?
Hi, hi Laurie, how you doing?
Hi, good, how are you? How you doing?
I have three quick questions. I think I know the answers to them, but I'm gonna ask anyways.
Okay, hopefully I'll have the answers for you.
I'm sure you will. The first one is, uh, do we have the right number of bank accounts? Not, uh, in other words, um, a separate bank account for everything we need one for, but not one that we don't need that could, could be combined with another one. This was a problem way long ago in the past. So I'm asking the question now that I have here.
I would say that you have the right amount of bank accounts. You have your general fund account um in Eastern Bank that we transfer funds over to your, both your Eastern Bank payroll account and your Eastern Bank vendor account where the checks are run through. And the MMDT accounts that we have, you have your, your, um, your general account that's over there, and then you have the various, um, you have a lot of like trust accounts over there, scholarship accounts, and those all have to be separated. They, they have to be.
Have to be separate.
They have to be separate. And the, the other account that you have, Cambridge, the Cambridge is the flex spending account, which is your um, the money that comes out of the checks from your employees for this flex spending, so that has to be its own account. I would say that you have, and you, we did just open a student activities account, like I mentioned in my report, because the auditors requested that we do. They thought that that should have been segregated, so we did do that. So I would say, yes, you have the right number of accounts.
Great. And um now this is something that the school committee has discussed a little bit. How much money is in the OPEB account, and do you feel that the way that we are managing it in terms of investment is, is pretty appropriate, or should we bump up our oversight of that?
Um, well, let me just grab my little map. So, um. So the OPEB account currently has a balance, this was as of October 31st, of $514,000 roughly. Um. The OPEB account is a discussion that I think probably need, does need to take place. Um, probably not tonight, but uh, it's, I, I personally think that this probably belongs with the more within in, with the state, with the Pritt fund, like you do with your retirement. That would be, I think that's a really good place to put that. I think they do a really good job over there. Um. I, I think that's a discussion that probably needs to take place. It is in Vanguard now, but just don't think, feel like it's getting the management that I would like to see it get. You know, the real specialized people that do that type of investing.
I think they've already discussed that on the FinCom, which uh Steve is about to mention.
Oh, okay. All right, so we're on, then maybe we're on the same page then, okay.
Well, uh, if, if I might, the, the Finance Committee did discuss it at our last meeting, and uh we basically gave uh the staff some direction to look at some other options, such as Pritt and things like that, and come back to us in the future with uh, with some options and the pros and cons of those options.
Okay, oh, okay, so you're already ahead of me. So that, it's been something that I, I thought would be a, I think you would do better if you put it in with professional money managers that instead of just a, you know, you, you, you've got it in such a limited, um, you got a, in a bond index fund, and you got it in a couple of, you know, basically money market funds. I, 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 I think that's, if you're looking at that, I, I, I concur with, with what you're doing. I think you're in the, you're going in the right direction.
Okay, and then I think Jeff, you said you had three questions?
Yes, uh, the other question is, um, and I'm sure I know the answer to this already, is, is, is all good, or is there anything untoward that you're looking at from your point of view as a treasurer?
No, I, I would say that, you know, the staff does a really good job. Um, we try to keep on top of everything. Um, we're in constant communication with each other, but no, I would say that um, things, I think things are going very well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Laurie, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, and thank you for what you do for the district.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Have a, have a good evening.
You too. Okay, so now we'll go back to, back to our regular agenda and to the student update and uh introduction of our student school committee representatives.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Elliott, and good evening, um Chair Nurse, Vice Chair Ladoo, school committee members, staff, and community. This evening, I am proud to have representatives of the district community joining me to present the district's updates, starting with our student representatives. And before we start, I'm going to share my screen. Oh. Ms. Pasegna?
You're all set.
Perfect, thank you. There we go. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. So, a, a number of meetings ago, the school committee shared your interest in having student representation on the school committee. And as the school continues to further develop a formal student government um association, an invitation was sent out to all of our seniors who might be interested in representing the student body on the school committee. From the number of seniors who applied, two students were selected based on their application, and the other applicants will be invited to serve on the superintendent's student advisory that will start second semester. So tonight, to provide us the students' updates, I present to you our new school committee student representatives, Lily Bhutan and Lyra Sossi.
So much, Dr. Dawson. Um, so myself and Lily um Burton, uh, attended, we got elected as the student representatives from Minuteman. Um, and since that time, we attended the Massachusetts Association of Student Representatives and Student Assembly. And that covered a whole bunch of different topics, and there were many student representatives from across the state. Some of the topics included that we got to learn about were diversity and inclusion, how to connect with students, academic achievement, and getting your voice out. There was also a, Dr. Dawson hosted a superintendent listen and learn um session for students to talk about the issues and get questions from Dr. Dawson. A bunch, several issues were raised, and there were many responses that were mature and wonderful. Sorry, I do not know how to conclude.
Okay, no, I, I didn't know if, um, if Lily wanted to speak at all. But I know that we do have a presentation from our Future Farmers of America Association. So thank you, Lyra and Lily. We look forward to your continued representation of the student body, and we really truly appreciate um your student leadership. So thank you very much for um serving on the school committee.
Yes, um, thank you. Um, and congratulations on being elected to be the representatives, and we do look forward to hearing from you at our meetings.
So we're going to next have our Future Farmers of America representatives.
Okay. Hi there, I'm Sarah Arndt. I'm the advisor for FFA, and I'll just, I just want to give everyone an overview um of FFA, because I know we have some new school committee members. So FFA, formerly known as Future Farmers of America, is the oldest and largest student organization in the country. It supports our students pursuing agricultural education. Um, up until about three years ago, it was only horticulture students that were enrolled, but we've moved to enroll all of our life science students, so that includes biotechnology, animal science, environmental, and horticulture. Um, this gives the life science students the opportunity to compete in both FFA and skills to showcase their talents. Um, that makes our chapter about over 100 members right now. Um, this past year, two of our Minuteman students, who I'm going to introduce to you, worked really hard on an, a, a particular competition called Chapter Exhibit. And that is to showcase our state agriculture. Um, it's judged by veterans, and um it was the first time that Minuteman won that event. And with that win, that meant that we got to go to the National FFA Convention and showcase Massachusetts and be the representatives for our state. So they have a, um, an event where it's called Hall of States, where every state is represented, and Minuteman was the Massachusetts representative for that. Um, with that, they connected with our Mass Department of Agricultural Resources um and got some swag, so people from around the country came by our booth. They got tons of different Massachusetts swag to take home. They learned all about our agriculture. Um, so it's a really cool opportunity, and I'm gonna hand it over to them. So it's, um, we have Carolyn Ward from Stowe and Allison Smith from Lexington.
Uh, hi, everybody. I'm Carolyn Ward. I am our current chapter's current vice president. Um, and as, as I said, we, the, this October, we took a trip to Indianapolis to see the national convention. Um, so a lot of hard work went into that. The next.
So I am Allison. I am our secretary. So, um, at Nationals, we did a bunch of cool stuff. One of the things that I've never done before was speak on stage in front of quite a large group of people. We were quite nervous uh going on stage and talking into microphones in front of everybody, but overall, I think we did a really good job. And we presented our slideshow, which, which was just, oh, also just Massachusetts agriculture. And um, yeah, I think we did a really good job.
So, at the convention, all 50 states and three US territories were rep, were there and represented. So we got to meet tons of people from all different sort of sorts of states. So there's this um, like, thing, almost all the students do, where they go around and they take pictures with the back of the jacket from each state, and and the right corner is Allison getting her picture taken with, I believe, somebody from Arkansas. And we were in a ton of like TikToks and Instagram posts. We also met, we were also um next to Hawaii setting up our exhibit. So we got to meet some people from Hawaii, which was really cool, and it just like opened our eyes to like new perspectives in their culture. Uh, it was really cool meeting all of them.
So while we were there, we had to visit the Speedway. We didn't go on the tour, but it was very busy, so we just decided to pop into the gift shop. Um, it was definitely on our list of things to do when we heard that we were going to be able to go to Indianapolis. So we bought a couple souvenirs, um, and yeah, it was, it was a good, it was a good um trip.
Uh, so we also went to Lucas Oil Stadium, which is their football stadium there in Indianapolis. For the opening session, it was really cool. There were like a lot of students. You can see in the picture in the top right-ish area. It, those seats were like packed full. At one point, uh, there was like a dance party, and everybody went down and danced, and it was just really cool to see that many kids in one place.
I think one of the best parts about this trip is that we really came together as a shop. So, um, seniors, so our senior blaze and some, a couple sophomores and as well as us juniors, we all went on this trip together, and we got to interact with um, the classes that we usually don't see because we have different weeks. So it was really great spending time with them, and I feel like we became pretty good friends over the trip. So that was really awesome.
And altogether, it was a really great experience, and we would definitely try to do it again. We would also like to thank Ms. Arndt for putting in all the hard work and giving us the encouragement to do this. We couldn't have gotten there without her, and we'd also like to thank Ms. P for chaperoning and giving us a hand, helping hand whenever possible. And and of course, we'd like to thank the Minuteman Committee and Administration for allowing us to take this amazing trip.
Well, well, congratulations to you for
Thank you.
For, you know, for, you know, coming in first, for being able to go on the trip, and for it, um, all of your experiences there, you know, we really appreciate the report.
Thank you, Carolyn and Allison, and a special thank you to our staff, Ms. Arndt and Ms. P. Um, and of course, our um CTE Director, Ms. Bouchard, and Mr. DePauler, our Assistant CTE Director, um, for all of their support. This isn't, um, it's always an undertaking when we take our students out, and, but it's always worth it, because as you can hear, the benefits are beyond um what we can give them just at Minuteman. So we're very proud of our A, um, FFA team. Thank you so much for your representation. And um you will always be our champions. So thank you so much for the update. And to start the superintendent's update this evening, I would like to present our Director of Teaching and Learning Innovations and Admissions, Mr. Anthony Cherry.
Thank you, Dr. Dawson. Good evening, everybody. Um, so I'm just gonna give a quick overview of where we are in the admission cycle, provide an update on applications, and share out a little bit about our showcase day, which we had this past Thursday. Uh, so this is just kind of a, an outline of our kind of uh marketing and recruitment calendar. Um, so to this point, we've begun our mailing campaign, which we started in early September to let families know about the school and the opportunities to learn more about how to engage with us. This includes our showcase day, open house, uh, tours, and our family information session. So uh, we've completed all of our middle school presentations. We finished that up um in October. We visited all of our member town middle schools, which we haven't done in a number of years as a result of uh restrictions due to the pandemic. So it was nice to get in there um and be physically in the school and see the kids. And when we go on these, it's um myself along with um several of our student ambassadors. And this year, what was really cool is that uh, at every single one of our middle schools, we were able to have at least one of our ambassadors, who was an alumni of that middle school. Um, and when we went to Acton and Arlington, and all of our ambassadors who were presenting were from either RJ Gray or the Audison Middle School, and um, the kids really loved that opportunity to go back to their school to um talk about Minuteman and, you know, see all their old teachers, and they get so excited about it. It's, you know, as a former teacher myself, it's always, you know, that remembrance of like, oh, they do remember us and, and how excited they are. So they always do a fantastic job of representing our school um and talking about Minuteman and their experience. Uh, and we'd also like to thank all of the mid, all of the sending middle schools for their Uh, and we'd also like to thank all of the mid- all of the sending middle schools for their warm welcome, for making the time for us. Um, in some cases, because the eighth grade classes are so large, we have to make multiple visits or have multiple presentations in the same day. And we know what a challenge that is, the schedule for our school. So, we just, you know, want to share our appreciation to all of the staff for, you know, making that happen. For us. Um, Dr. Dawson, you can uh move to our next slide. So, on Thursday, this past Thursday, November tenth, we hosted our annual showcase day. At this showcase day, seven of our ten middle schools were in attendance um for around about four hundred and fifty students. And you can see um, that's an increase from past years. The last time we had. All of the sending schools at one time was in twenty nineteen, which was the um, was November of right before the pan- when the pandemic began. We did not have a showcase day in twenty twenty because of the pandemic. Um, and last year, we kind of returned to something closer to normal, but there were still a number of schools who had restrictions on their field trip. So, a number of schools were unable to attend in this year. Um. Uh, Needham and Acton weren't able to attend, but we're hosting a special showcase day just for those two towns on December sixth to ensure that their students. Have access to see um what opportunities are here at Minuteman for them. So, you know, i- in terms of some of the towns specifically, um, over half of the eighth grade class from Stowe, Lancaster and Arlington. Chose to um experience our revolution in learning. And on top of that, we had over a hundred of our own student volunteers. Who came to support um the day. And I could come up with something interesting to say about that, but I'm just going to share what Mr. Clement wrote. In terms of our students who volunteer their time, he wrote that the, they volunteered because of their passion for their career majors. Pride in their school and positive relationships with each other and their teachers. Some students forego the opportunity to work and earn money because they would rather help inspire younger students. Their enthusiasm for school and demonstration of skill display all the best qualities we could aspire to realize. And and I couldn't agree more with those sentiments um from Mr. Clement. And this is a really important day for us as far as recruitment. So, getting as many students in here and see what we do and really experience what it's like to learn at Minuteman. Uh, Dr. Dawson, if you can go to the next slide, please.
And I do want to just acknowledge um the staff, right, the, the work that they do to prepare. And um, you know, to see it for the first time myself this year is is very impressive and just continues to show. What continues to make Minuteman special and and the collaboration and coming together of the staff and the students. So, thank you, Mr. Cherryello, for your leadership in making um this a very successful day. I know it wasn't just you. But it does take a good leader to also make it happen. So, but thank you to all the staff and students for a very successful um showcase day.
Absolutely. Um, yeah, there are so many people to thank in terms of making that day happen. Um, so I guess appreciation to all of them. So, our, our next, I'll get to this data in one moment, but the next event on our admissions counter is our open house, which will be held this Sunday. On the uh November twentieth from ten AM to one PM. And we encourage anyone who's interested in learning more about Minuteman, and that's whether they're current eighth graders or if they're ready to get a head start on learning about Minuteman. We definitely get seventh graders, sixth graders attending this event. Um, we already have close to three hundred families who have registered. To attend on Sunday, which is, it's really great. And so, all these efforts have resulted in the continued increase in interest in our school. So, this data is as of November thirteenth. Um, so this is. A ninety percent increase in applications year over year um from November thirteenth of twenty one to November thirteenth of twenty two. Most of the towns are seeing significant increases. Some are kind of stable and then others, I would call them minimal decreases. But are still above where they have been in the past, just not year over year. And just for context, we didn't have this many applications until December of twenty twenty one. So, that's where we're at right now with admissions, with our events. Um, we have a family information session that we are just trying to finalize some of the folks. Who are sit on that panel before we announce the official date, but that'll be in December. That's a virtual event. So, it's easier for folks to attend. And for our panelists to be part of. Um, and then we kind of just get into the uh process of applications and interviews and all that. That piece of the process. So, if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer those for you.
I just want to make sure that I understand this slide, this last slide that was just taken away. Is this number down here? Where the in- increase, the seventy-three in the far right column at the bottom. That's the increase in applications over last year at this time. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Is there any reason to think that this just happens to be an early year or is this a trend that may continue throughout the application season? Or we are?
So, it, it's a totally fair question, Jeff, and and I think we have to wait a little bit to see if things, you know. Flatten out a little bit. Um, the only thing that I could think of is part of the email we send to our uh sending schools to send to their families. It does have a link to register for these events that we have, but then it also at the bottom of it says if you're interested in applying. So, it's entirely possible that um. People who are like, oh, I want to apply and here's the link right here in front of me. So, that's, I don't know, but that's a possibility in terms of. Uh, why the early bump, but I think we have to kind of see how, uh, because December, there's a bump too, like after the open house. And after the family information session. So, if we don't see a giant bump there, then it probably means that it's, it was just early. But if we do, then it's trending up. It'll be hard.
Right. So, we really have to watch this very carefully to know if we're going to have a problem with um waiting lists.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, thank you. Just go like this because.
I know. When we ran this data originally, I had a similar reaction.
Right, okay.
And I think it is reflective of what's happening um just in a, in a larger level. The number one, the interest of um, you know, career technical education. And I think also, you know, the work that the school team is doing in getting the word out. And and um really putting in that concerted effort to ensure that our students and our families. I know Mr. O'Brien is always working on trying to get that communication out to share information about, you know, who we are, what we do here. And what makes us so special. Um, and I know, you know, just the way the guidance interact, you know, with interests come in from our students. And um, so it's, I think, a number of of factors, but we, you know, definitely is something that we need to watch where our trend is going to continue. And this is just our first year, so clearly not enough to see a trend, but definitely um something that we do need to be aware of. Yeah. So, um, thank you for that, Mr. Cherryello. And this is exciting news because we know. You know, the great offerings that we offer students at Minuteman. And we do want to make sure that we're providing access to as many students as possible. So, um, we are being mindful of what other options there may be um for students who may end up on the waitlist. So, just, we'll have to see how that happens. Um, and. Another piece of, I think, you know, what makes Minuteman special is not just the education that we're offering our ninth through twelfth graders. But through the Minuteman Technical Institute, the opportunities that we are providing our post-secondary um learners. And so, to provide an update on Minuteman Technical Institute, tonight I present to you our Director of MTI. Dr. Nancy Hul.
Thank you, Dr. Dawson and School Committee for this opportunity to bring you up to date on the progress. That Minuteman Technical Institute has made over the um past few years. Um, and as you may know, or if you are new to the district or the school committee, Minuteman Technical Institute, which is also MTI. Is the uh district's post-secondary branch of providing career and technical education to folks eighteen years of age. And older who have earned a high school degree or an equivalency um and who have passed the Corey Story screen. Um, and then who have. For our MTI programs gone through an application process that includes an interview letters of recommendation. Um, transcript presentation or through our new um career tech initiative grants, which we also call our CTI grant. Have qualified um as either unemployed or underemployed persons. Um, and we provide short-term and long-term career tech education and training for workplace readiness. To these folks. Um, we've been very successful in garnering uh grant awards. And we've been able to develop um as a leader in the CTI community. Um, with innovative programming and sponsors to changes. In our collaboration with the Commonwealth Corporation. Um, we've been very, very successful with our Pre-Aprentice Pre-Aprentice Program. Um, we also have a CNC machine operator program, a welding program, and then program through um. Nancy, we offer a robotic technician program and through our chapter seventy-four programs. This year, we're offering cosmetology, electrical and um, I'm sorry, I went on that. Um, cosmetology and electrical. Um, during the time of the pandemic, we turned those chapter seventy-four programs back. Um, due to both the impact of COVID on uh people's time and ability to pay for such a program. And also the impact that COVID had on various industries, including um colonia. We did have a robust number of students interested in our automotive technician program. Which is also a chapter seventy-four post-secondary program. However, we were unable to procure a, an instructor for the evening. So, that was the first challenge that we faced this year. Um, successes, um, again besides our CPI grant. Awards. Um, I am, if we go back one slide quickly. I am, I would like to point out to the school committee that um our current chapter seventy-four students have paid. As a group, uh more than half their tuition already and we've been in session um since the end of August. So, I would project that by March of twenty twenty-three, tuition from our chapter seventy-four students would be paid as full. And that would be the first time in three years that we um achieved that benchmark, which I think is really great. I believe it speaks to the quality of our students, the integrity of our students. And the um success of our um application and interview process. To, to find our mature students who are prepared to do what they need to do to get to their goal. Next slide, next slide, please. Um, looking at the CTI grant programs. We've received from Commonwealth Corporation through the Governor's CTI Initiative um for grants in varying amounts. These are um competitive grants, but um Commonwealth Corporation is very eager to share, share the financial benefits. Of the process. In round one, we had two programs and our grant award was a hundred thousand. Um, we were able to qualify for a startup grant, which provided us forty thousand additional dollars to help with um developing curriculum. Having instructors participate in the development of that curriculum. Uh, round three, we did some cohorts again in the carpentry, pre-apprentice and welding programs. That grant was awarded to us in the amount of two hundred and ten thousand dollars. And then the round six grant, which I was by myself when this email came across and I was horrified that I was by myself. And I thought I was going to pass out when I saw the amount of money that uh we were awarded. But our most recent grant from Commonwealth Corporation was nine hundred thousand dollars and that will um. Support programming from January twenty twenty-three through the middle of twenty twenty-five. And we will do carpentry, pre-apprentice again, uh welding again. We will try uh CNC machine operator and we will introduce the plumbing tier one hybrid program. That provides students the theoretical um one hundred and ten hours needed for their um licensure. Beginning their licensure as well as some hands-on, so that they um, after fifteen weeks, they have some certifications. And some training to go into the field as either a plumber's helper or a plumber's apprentice. We also received a Donnelly grant, an amount of five hundred thousand dollars, another time that I was by myself at a very significant moment in time. Um, for facilities management training. We're partnering, partnering with the International Facilities Management Association. To train approximately seventy um facilities manager folks over two years. And this will also start in January of twenty twenty-three. We have some industry partners that are uh very eager to start with us. Including Sadekso and Jones Lang was out. And then we were also awarded a NAMC grant. From the North Atlantic um Machine Consortium in the amount of thirty thousand six hundred dollars. Through that funding, we were able to train a cohort of six folks um to be robotics technicians. Um, and they will leave us next week. The program ends next week. They will have um a couple certifications and the tools needed to either um supplement their current position. And therefore maybe move up in their current position or establish themselves in a new job um as robotics technician. Our chapter seventy-four programs, we have a new instructor in cosmetology. We started the program with twelve students, which was a record for us. We currently have eleven. The salon is open. We're servicing clients and a few of our students also work in the field. Outside of their MTI instructional hour. In our electrical program, our veteran instruct- instructors have returned. We again have a record number of twelve students. Some of whom are also working in the field outside of their MTI class time. And as I previously mentioned, in automotive, we had eight students interested, which would have been um the most students. Um, in the past three years interested in that program. However, uh in spite of all of our best efforts and numerous attempts to reach out. To folks who could provide us um their skill as an instructor, we were unable to hire anyone. So, we will try again in the spring. Um, plumbing tiers two through five are running. We currently have thirty-three students enrolled um in those plumbing programs. We are sharing tier three with Mesoba. Um, they have students enrolled in their program. They had an instructor that felt new and, and working with my counterpart at Mesoba. Um, we developed an online program um with an MTI instructor. Who has worked with us in the past in the evenings. He offered to work with these um young plumbers. Because he knows how important it is to get them trained and onto the field. So, between um his generosity with his time and relationship between myself and then Mesoba. Technical Institute Director, we were able to serve those students. And I would like to share with the school committee. That the budget planning process for MTI has been formalized. They're working very closely with Mr. Eichenen. This is Andre and this is Patrano to establish and skip to a budget. That um supports our students thoroughly, um provides them the tools, equipment. And really great instructors um while um being a self-sustaining organization within the district. But this time, if there are questions, I'm happy to answer.
Um, Alice.
Um, thank you. That was very informative. Very, I am very interested in this program. Because there's a tremendous need for it. Um, I'm curious, two things. One, um, the students who are. Enrolled in the classes, are any of them doing any kind of loans to pay their tuition or are they getting paid? Some, at some point, these, the towns were paying a certain amount of the tuition for some of these kids or adults, actually.
So, our, our adult students who attend our chapter seventy-four program. So, currently would be cosmetology, our cosmetology and our electrical students are all self-paid. Um, many of them use a ten-month payment plan through automatic recurring billing. So, they're presenting us with credit or debit card information and setting up a plan. And sometimes we extend to eleven months just because the family can, or the student can afford that breakdown. More so than they could a ten-month breakdown. Um, but that, to my knowledge, I don't know. Um, but that, to my knowledge, I don't know if they are taking personal loans, um, but we are not. Authorized to offer Pell Grants for um, student loans to them.
Okay, thanks. And the second question is, um, do we track um, what they do after they leave? So are they employed in their field? Are they? Do we know kind of how successful the program is in getting them into where they want to be?
Yes, um, I don't have members at this particular point in time, but I'm happy to present them for the next um, school committee meeting. And we can look over the course of the past three years. And I will say anecdotally, the vast majority of all students land in the field that they have trained for. The um. Flagship program, again, as I say, is the carpentry pre-apprenticeship program, where we have about a ninety percent placement and um. Um. Retention um, average.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Jeff?
Uh, is this amount of of grants typical or is just. A great big surprise? And is this indicative of the future, or is this just this one-time surprise event in your view?
The governor's workforce cabinet um, launched the C T I brands about a year and a half ago. And they do overlap. Um, it will be interesting to see if this is staying through the next state um, governorship. Um, but I do know that. They, they want to expand the programs, and as they said earlier, they're very generous with the funding that they have now. So. I don't know if it's a one-time thing. I'm hoping that the next um, governor will continue to support this program because it is. Um, very necessary. And it's helped a lot of people who are unemployed or underemployed. Um, earn skills that give them a living wage. And in some cases, benefits, and in some cases, uh, pension.
Okay, so.
What was surprising to me was the amount of, amounts of money that two of our grants brought in. Um, and I'm very proud of the work that the M T I do did to procure those grants. The Donnelly Grant has been um, around for many years. Nancy Grant is new. Um, but the C T I grants will try to tell you how long they will be in the picture.
Yes, the amount of these grants caught my attention. And I know that um, Charlie Baker was very much involved in, in career tech and uh, beyond that education. We do not know if the, if the new governor is gonna really uh, take the same stance. I'm just wondering if there's any role for us to try to have a communication with the new governor. To let her know that we're here and to try to get some idea of where she stands in this issue, on these issues.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, because we did get a lot of benefit from uh. The current admin, the outgoing administration's focus on career tech education and um. And post-career tech education, and it would be nice if we could, you know. Uh, if it's not on her agenda as strongly as it was the current governor, that maybe we can somehow, we can um. Help do that. I'm just wondering out loud. I don't know if there's really any.
And I, and yes, Mr. Stulyn, um. I, I do know that just statewide, the Massachusetts Association of Vocational Administrators. Um, you know, this, it's part of our, our focus as well to connect with a new um. New leadership coming on board. But for Minuteman, you know, as you know, I've been meeting with a number of um. Elected officials, and in doing so, I've made some connections and, and part of next steps. We were waiting for the um, elections to um, election results to be. Uh, final so that we can make those connections, and um, that is on our radar. To do so, um, I've met with um, Ms. Hogan and um, the. The madam chair of the Education Committee, um, Ms. Mr. Look, help me with the name, Ms. Pei, is it Pei? Am I saying that correctly?
Yes, that is correct.
Yes, so um. You know, and, and, and I'm not doing justice to all of the elective officials that I've met so far, but um, absolutely. Next step is to connect with the new administration to highlight what it is that uh, Minuteman and M T I offers. And, you know, I think more and more people are understanding, and if they're not, we're continuing to educate that. Career technical schools like Minuteman and M T I, we are the solution. That our industry partners are looking for and that our economy needs. There is um, such a number of, you know, unfilled jobs. And then there are such a number of unemployed people. And the reason why we have that is the disconnect between the alignment of our industry needs and the skills that our people have. And so when you look at what M T I and Minuteman, what we do is we are educating our current. Um, workforce as well as our future workforce with the necessary skills to meet the needs of our industry. So um. I want to thank Dr. Hool for uh, the great work that she's doing, also to just acknowledge her teammate, Ms. Conones, who also does um, a lot of hard work. And I know, again, uh, Mr. O'Brien has been working really hard to get the word out there about what we offer. And, you know, it truly is um, an opportunity to economic mobility for a number of our um, families. And, and it's, it's a very important work that we do. And this work also, you know, continues to stay relevant because of our partnership with our industry partners. And so if it's okay, um, unless there are any other questions, um, just kind of transitioning to the other element. Of what helps us be as successful as we are, because, you know, it, it, none of this is in isolation. And it's absolutely necessary, the support that we get from our industry partners and um, member of our team who leads that work. Uh, of course, our director of C T E, our assistant director of C T E. Um, Ms. Bouchard, our director and our assistant director, Mr. DiPaolo, and I, I know our staff representative. Um, leadership that works on this is Ms. Dempsey. And so to. Uh, provide us an update on our latest program advisory appreciation dinner, I'd like to um, pass it on to Ms. Bouchard.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, good evening. Um, so I'm here to present on the uh, program advisory appreciation dinner. So on October thirteenth, uh, we hosted our typically annual uh, program advisory dinner. Um, and I just wanted to thank everyone who's involved. We have a lot of different uh, Minuteman staff, a lot of different students. And uh, programs that come together to put on this event. Uh, the food is always wonderful. It's always the biggest compliment of the night is the work that our culinary. Uh, students and staff do to feed all of our members that come. So it's a really great evening. Um, it is a requirement that all of our nineteen career and tech programs have advisory boards. Um, they got our programs to meet industry needs. Um, they create partnerships and we gain industry-recognized credentials uh, through their uh, leadership and kind of guidance. Uh, this is our first in-person meeting uh, since the new building opened in two thousand nineteen. Uh, so it's great to have everyone back together. Uh, we had an awesome turnout. We had over a hundred and fifty uh, attendees. Um, and we actually had one person flying from Florida, who uh, definitely won for the furthest traveled uh, to attend the meeting, which was great. Um, we're always looking for new partnerships um, between different partners and stakeholders to come support Minuteman's career and technical education programs. I just want to go to the next slide. Um, this is a picture of myself and Mark Downey. Uh, Mr. Downey is a member of our engineering and robotics uh, advisory boards. Uh, and he was one of the recipients of our appreciation award. Uh, he helped us secure this year a grant uh, through A D I for about fifty thousand dollars. Uh, which is going to allow us to have a collaborative robot uh, for many of our programs to use. Uh, we also recognize Chris Craven. Uh, he wasn't at the dinner that night, but he was a chair from our um, welding and metal fabrication program uh, from previous years. So we just again want to extend our appreciation to our advisory board members, our partners and our staff who helped put on this uh, great evening. It was just wonderful to have everyone back in person uh, together again.
Thank you, Ms. Bouchard. And I do want to give a um, shout out to our co-op coordinator, uh, Ms. Jazin, who does an awesome job of. Uh, connecting with our industry partners to really get our students placed on the co-ops. And also just the, you know, helping with the new partnerships that um, she helps to create. So we do want to also thank Ms. Jazin, um, Christine, Ms. Christina Jazin for all of her efforts and support uh, with the C T E program as well. So that takes us to um. The superintendent engagements. So I just, you know, wanted to just provide an update, as you know, that I'm still working on our uh, new superintendent entry plan. And um, in doing, in doing so, just really making sure that I'm out there and connecting and engaging with our various stakeholders. And um, just taking the time to really listen, observe, and learn. Um, and some of the, I, the engagements that I participated in and as a part of my L O L. I did go and um, in an effort to show my support on behalf of the district to our new school um, committee representatives. Um, Ms. Lily and Ms. Lyra and um, just to go show them some support, stopped by the Massachusetts um, Association of Student Representatives Student Assembly. And also um, for those of you who may not know, but October is STEM month. And um, we did have an awesome STEM week here at Minuteman. And I do want to um, just acknowledge and give a special thanks and appreciation, especially to Ms. Ard. And um, Mr. DiPaolo for all of the work that they did in really reaching out and creating opportunities for our students. To engage with and learn from um, industry experts in the area of, of STEM. And it was, I wish I could list them all, um, but it was really, really impressive. The um, experts that they were able to bring in for the students to really uh, engage in. The relevance of STEM, but also different types of um, employee opportunities in the world of STEM, and that it is meant for all of our males and females. And um, so I just want to thank them for that. I did, um, I actually was invited by the lieutenant governor. Um, during her visit to Minuteman this summer to um, serve on the Massachusetts STEM Advisory Council. So I was sworn in during um, the STEM week that was kicked, uh, kicked off by the governor and lieutenant governor at Northeastern University. Um, I was sworn in a couple of days before then with a number of other um, representatives that was, was joining the council and um. We will be actually having members from the kickoff to come and actually connect with our students. On uh, student college, you know, um, perspectives in the world of STEM. So we look forward to that. Um, in an effort to continue our communication and collaboration with our town administrators. We started our quarterly meetings, and so we held our first official quarterly meeting. I did have an opportunity to meet with them. Um, before I officially started on the job. Um, and, you know, to try to meet with all of the administrators, just with scheduling constraints, we ended up having two meetings. But just to really provide them an update as to, you know, what's happening here up at Minuteman. The, you know, the impact of that and the towns and just having some conversation about what are we preparing for as we know budget season is coming up and um. And just, you know, giving them an update on the new um, new school year and the work that the team is undertaking. Also, um, you know, just a special thank you to Mr. Fusco and members of the Alumni Association for a very successful twenty twenty-two Hall of Fame celebration. That um, was held on November fourth. Uh, we honored a number of our alumni and um. It was, I think there's a picture of it there. It was very success, successful. It's great to see our alumni return home. And for us to let them know that they are part of the Minuteman family always, and regardless of um, old building, new building. That they are always welcome. They're part of Minuteman family. So um, it was uh, great to see all of them. And then um, the Minuteman Parent Association, you know, worked with Lexington, the town of Lexington, to raise funds for the student scholarships. Um, through the Lexington's Battle Green Run that was held on Saturday, November sixth. I want to thank Mr. uh, Mr. Clement, Ms. Bouchard, Mr. O'Brien. Um, and I know there were a number of student uh, volunteers there, and as usual, our culinary team and our health assisting teams were there to also work at the event. But um, you know, I think it was, especially since COVID, this was one of the larger um, groups to run. Um. I, I wasn't as sore as I was expecting because, you know, I did a little bit of warm-up, but um, I did not end up doing the ten K, but I did run the five K. Um, but definitely we need to do more warm-ups and more running so I can get a faster time. But I do hope that next year, uh, we can get more students and staff to join in um, in raising uh, some scholarship dollars for our students on being. In uh, supporting our parent association as well in such, such events. So those are just some of the engagements that I participated in as part of my listen, observe, and learn. There are a number of others. Um, but I thought these were some of the highlights to share with you as I continue the entry plan. Um, and as uh, Lily and Lyra shared. Just having some really inform, informative listen and learn sessions, um, had a number of them with uh, various number of, of student groups. And so that's always enlightening to hear. But I just want to um, say that that concludes the superintendent's update. I do want to thank all of the staff and students in helping provide all of the updates tonight. And as um. Uh, November is a month of giving thanks and acknowledging um, each other. I just wanted to share on behalf of Minuteman community, our gratitude and appreciation to all. And um, Chair Nurse, if it's okay with you, I'd like to pass it on to Principal Clement for the principal's updates.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Very informative report.
Yeah, we have a revised and updated school calendar. Um, this is because of the MCAST dates that weren't released until. Uh, early September, uh, and it necessitated some changes logistically for us. We need to make sure that we get our sophomores in an. In a core content rotation. It just facilitates making the um, giving the test. It makes it a lot easier. Some years, we don't have to make any changes. Um, this year, we had to make many. We just didn't get lucky with the dates that they. Uh, they gave us. So really what you see on, on the um, calendar. You know, when we talk about changing yellow to blue is, is really just moving uh, you know, sophomores out of the C T E rotation into a academic rotation and vice versa. There are no changes in terms of uh, start of the year, end of the year, vacations, holidays. Um, we've had this uh, calendar worked over with lead teachers, the administration and the union. So everyone has um, seen it. And um, given its approval to it. The only uh, this is significant change is that we did drop one. Um, two-hour release, uh, early release in May, and again, uh, I'm sorry, in March. But that was really based on the MCAST dates again, to make sure that, you know, that we couldn't have one of those. The kids needed to be there all day. For instruction and for the test. So um, that's it. Unless anybody has any questions about that. We just wanted to put it forward to you for a vote for your approval, so that uh, Mr. O'Brien and I. Uh, can get this out to families and get it on the website and make sure everybody knows that there are just some of these minor tweaks.
Uh, Principal Clement, if I may, did you say there's only one removal of an early release, or are there two in March and one in May? Or is it?
No.
I have one in March and May.
You took the seventeenth out?
Correct. So I just have March twenty ninth and the seventeen.
Because of the, right, because of the MCAST, but the, what we did is we took, yeah, we were sorry, what was the two-hour delay? Uh, two-hour early release we took out in, in uh, March. That one, we just eliminated altogether.
Correct.
Okay, so, well, can we um, um, have a motion on the table? And then we can have discussion. Could I have a motion to approve the amendments to the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school? school academic calendar? So I guess I didn't quite follow that. So could I just ask? And, and we're talking about the calendar that was distributed in the last packet, right?
Correct.
But you are removing both the March and the April early release.
March and May.
I mean, March and May. Yes.
So those will be full school days, March 29th and May 17th. They are currently early release days. They will become full school days due to the MCAS schedule.
Okay. Other comments or questions? If not, we'll go to a roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue conquered, yes.
Ford Spauling Dover, yes.
Jeff Stulley Needham, yes.
Alice Luca Stow, yes.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you. Also on the update is, we just want to let folks know that we did, we had reconvened the school council. We couldn't get a meeting in, in September, but we did get one in for October. I want to give a big shout out to our students that are involved on the committee, on the council, Alice Dalton and Cole Traywick. Just amazing, you know, their contributions is just so mature in the way they, the questions they ask and, and the comments that they make. Very, very thoughtful, very, very helpful. I can, we gave an update on, on the goals that we wrote together. And there was a lot of excitement that the superintendent is considering, you know, working the goals that we wrote together as part of, as part of our entry plan. So that generated a nice, a nice bit of excitement. And, you know, we're looking forward to having another meeting coming up this month as well. But really, I'm just letting you know that this is this function that we need to make sure that we, we do is happening. And then culinary, they have a Thanksgiving holiday event on Friday, November 18th. It's a luncheon buffet that will be served in the district restaurant. It's $12 per person plus a tax. You get turkey, mashed potatoes, squash stuffing, vegetable bakery rolls that are freshly made, apple cider. And you have a choice of apple or blueberry crisp. It's, it's a high demand event. So they're going to have two seedings that day. The first seating is from 11 to 12:15. And the second is from 12:30 to 1:45. Advance reservations are required. And, you know, they'll, they'll direct it to a tables. Jeff Curry will have it all. Her and her team will have it all straightened out. Really encourage people to participate in this event. Obviously, we'll be promoting it. We, we are promoting it already, but just, I just wanted to draw attention to it. Also, there's a Thanksgiving pie online order form that is still available and up on the website. That they will run out of the ability to, to make pies. So that will get closed soon. But if you're interested in having, you know, a couple of pies made, I can tell you they're fantastic. Save a lot of time, let someone else do the work. So that's available. And, you know, if that wasn't enough, they continue to do their community service work with two of their partners, Food Link and Arlington. They're going to make 150 meals for them for Thanksgiving. And Lex Eat Together will also receive 100 meals that our kids and we'll be making for them. So it's a, so it's a busy time. It's, it's a great time. And I think they'd love to see and get a little pat on the back for, for all the effort that they're putting in.
Um, thanks. Jeff?
Just curious, how many people in each sitting?
That's a good question. I don't know what the max capacity is off the top of my head for the district restaurant, but I will tell you, it will be full. So I think it's a little under, it's over 100, but under 200. How's that?
So 200 at least total meals to be given in that one day.
Oh, they'll crank it up. Yep.
Okay, that's a lot.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much for your report.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move to subcommittee reports. Ford, just school building committee?
Thank you. But before I do that with your indulgence, I want to say two things that I think are good. One, we talked about culinary, George, Mr. Clement just talked about culinary. They also do a weekly soup group. And the, it comes out Sunday. You can put in your request for the soups and the breads and the cookies and all that. And it started during COVID. It's just a greater thing. I mean, I'm going to go up on Thursday and pick up a couple of soups and a couple of those because we give them to neighbors and, and have them ourselves. And, and I really recommend that you take a look at that. The culinary students and staff doing incredible jobs. So added to what Dr. George Clement just said, they do the soup group once a week. And it's, it's really is terrific. Secondly, I wanted to add on to Dr. Dawson's talk about the Minuteman Hall of Fame. Minuteman does an excellent job talking about their alumni over the course of the year. And Dan O'Brien has led that effort and appreciate it. This year, I was, was at the dinner. I do enjoy going to it. They didn't have it for the last couple of years. But the alumni that were honored are really exceptional group. Couple of women were in the biotech industry and really champions in it. And I could go on with others. But we have, the school has sent out information on the, the honorees. If you get a chance to look at it, do so. I think our alumni can do a lot to increase our admissions process and the information out there. So I want to thank Minuteman for continuing to spread the word. And I want to thank the Minuteman Hall of Fame group for what they do. It was an exceptional evening. So, thank you. Thank you, Pam, for letting me do that because my report is going to be very quick. In the north building, they poured the slab on the north building, which is going to be for welding. Steel delivery is on December 5. Panels are delivered on November 30, starting first part of January. They'll start constructing. Once the, the, all that is done and up, then students will take over and finish the job. So that is on an existing foundation that went up when we did our building project. So that's my report. We're on time and obviously on budget.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay. Let's move on then to our communications access and admissions. Jeff?
Well, that report earlier today gives us more to think about for CAA, the increase in, in role of applications this early in the year. We'll have to watch that very closely. But the main thing I want to report is that we are not going to be able to meet the, the possible goal of having a town meeting vote this spring on a possible new member. We don't have enough time to do the reports and the due diligence and the communications to meet that timeline. Does not mean that we are uninterested in doing so. It means that the timeline is too tight. And some of our member towns have mixed feelings about this. And the mixed feelings are the same things that we have talked about before. On one hand, if you have additional members, you may have a little bit more financial stability in the long run, regardless of what happens with enrollment from individual towns. On the other hand, you have fewer slots to offer for your students. And your political situation may get more complicated. So that doesn't mean that we are not going to continue to pursue looking at expanding the district. But it means is that, and I, and I was pretty sure we wouldn't really be able to meet that timeframe because it's just too short with the closing of warrants like just a couple of months away. So the CAA is going to continue to pursue looking at expanding the district. And a big part of that is chatting with our member towns, having conversations about the pros and cons. Because the bottom line is that unless all of them say yes at a town meeting, it's not going to happen. Whatever our opinion is. So we have to, there's going to be more reporting from the administration. There's going to be more discussion at the CAA and at the school committee as a whole. And a lot more communication with our member towns. And we are going to continue to pursue this. And things like an increase in enrollment from our current member towns does impact our discussion to some extent, although as was mentioned, it's really too early to understand what's really going to happen this year with, with admissions. But based on the early data, that's very, very impressive. I know that anybody else in the CAA, I know that Alice has some comments.
Alice.
Um, when did we learn that we absolutely could not meet this deadline?
We can't meet the deadline because I know at least one town is in no hurry to do so. And they made that very clear.
Are we to know which town or is this a secret?
Well, I think that Needham is one, and I've heard tell of another one or two indirectly. So there, in other words, they're not saying no, but it's going to require some politicking and discussion. And I don't think that we have enough time to, I'm, I'm really sure we don't have enough time to accomplish that in Needham based upon a meeting that I had with them, that the superintendent was present at. And she can give me her view on that as well if she disagrees with what I just said.
No, I, I agree with you, Mr. Stulley. And also, Mr. Luca, when we were meeting with the town administrators, when they were sharing the timeline of when they would need information as they're preparing for their town meetings, they would need all of our information by December. And we knew that to try to have enough vetted information that we would not be able to have that ready by December.
Okay, thank you.
So that's, that's really all I have to say is that, that it's not surprising to me that we, we are going to miss this timeframe. I think that potential new members are going to be unhappy about that. But it's not that we're uninterested or dragging our feet. It's just the nature of the timing. And the, the, the regional agreement dictates this. Okay, so that's where we stand on that.
Okay, Alice?
I would, I would urge us to consider that the, there's a certain type of bottlenecking that can occur in some of the town boards that actually prevents the greater population of the town from having a say sometimes. And I, I want to be cautious about not letting that happen too much with this because I think that there are certain drivers to the increase in the applications, which will go away. And when that happens, we have to be, we have to have planned for it. So, you know, we, we go on and on about this, but I, I, we've seen it before where certain individuals in a town can make decisions for the greater town without actually getting any input at all from the citizens of the town. So I want to just make sure we don't get trapped by that.
I fully agree with Mr. Luca on this. It is something that as part of the politicking we have to do is to develop the case for expanding the town and to present that case in a way that the town as a whole gets to make a decision on it. Because ultimately, it's town meeting, not the select board or anybody else who gets to decide if they want to come in or out.
And, and I want to clarify, I think what I'm hearing is Jeff, you're not suggesting that we, you know, let up our, you know, on exploring this, looking into this, you know, making a recommendation that we continue to move ahead as we have been. You're just saying, you're just giving your opinion on where you think will the likelihood of that getting done in time for this round of town meetings.
As far as I'm concerned, it's pedal to the metal. It's just that even at full speed, we're not going to make it by December or even, I don't think we can make it by January to do the full vetting. So from my point of view, it's pedal to the metal because we, we're going to focus on this. We're going to, where, where the research is ongoing, we've got to start having those discussions. Because if we don't, it'll stretch out and we'll miss the next, next deadline. And as Alice is concerned about, the right people won't hear about this. So it's a pedal to the metal. We have to strategize. We can have a longer timeframe and we're going to take you, take advantage of that.
Okay. Alice?
Um, one other thing, the whole school committee could be, it would be good for you to know. If you look back at about 20 years of admissions data, you will see these very large increases and then decreases depending on which districts are renovating their high schools. And so that is the thing that has got me in this obsessive mood. And why I raised my hand three times is that I, I remember that. And I've been watching those statistics all these years. And it's, it's over a very long period of time. You can see 58 kids, 14 kids. It drops off like a cliff when it happens. And that's, that's why I get nervous about it.
Okay, well, and on that note, I'll just add another that the CAA committee is continuing to move forward on this. Okay, um, policy subcommittee update.
Good evening, everyone. I'm happy to share some news for the policy subcommittee. We're changing the way we're doing it and moving into a more collaborative approach at the district level. We've created what I'm calling a policy development team, different than the subcommittee. That is made up of Dr. Who, Mr. Clement, Mr. Cheerialo, Mr. Eikeden, Ms. Bouchard, myself, and then Dr. Dawson supporting the team. We've separated the policy manual into sections and we've each taken on two sections of the policy manual that align with our interest or expertise. We've created a one, a document that has every policy listed, its adoption date, its revision date or review date, if that's happened. So we can sort them by, by date. We are all going to take turns working on documents and looking at them, starting with the policies that are probably the most out of date and trying to get those updated. The plan is to create a calendar where over a three-year period, every policy in the manual has been reviewed and revised if needed or reviewed and revoted. So every three years, they'll have been looked at. And I can tell you right now, some of them have not been looked at in quite a few years. So then we will do that work and revise and make edits at the district level. And then for the policy subcommittee, we will be coming to the committee with drafts of documents that we've already done the legwork on and drafted and providing the drafts to the policy subcommittee for their review and feedback. We will be giving them the original document that is currently in our policy manual. We will be giving them a copy of the revised document with the track changes. So you can see where we've edited, if we have. We'll give them a clean copy so they can read it without all of the edits. And if there is an MASC version, we will also give that as reference. So up to four different documents. Our goal is to give that before any scheduled school committee or subcommittee meeting. We would send out those documents and revisions a week ahead of time. So when we do meet, all of the subcommittee members will have had enough time to review. And if they have questions, be able to ask those at the subcommittee meeting with, with us. I think that we have pushed off having a subcommittee meeting until after the winter break. And in that time, the, the policy development team will be meeting. Um, the winter break, and in that time, this the policy development team will be meeting, and our goal is to. Have maybe three to four policies for review at every subcommittee. Meeting um moving forward so that we can meet that three-year goal of every policy being reviewed. Um, I will note that if we see that an M A S C update has come in and it's substantial changes, or if. Our attorneys or auditors make a suggestion that we need to update a policy, we will. Move that to the top of the list and review that immediately, um and then do the other ones as we've scheduled. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to finance report. Uh Steve, are you going to kick it off?
Yeah, I'll I'll kick it off. Uh, we had a meeting uh last week and. Voted to recommend most of the most of the items that are in front of you this evening uh that are applicable anyways. Um, and that also, we we did discuss as as mentioned, when the when the when the treasurer was uh giving her report of that we. Uh, did discuss some kind of O P E D investment uh strategies, maybe with it with a financial uh manager. And we've asked the staff to kind of look at look at that and see see uh you know what the feasibility of that is. We did get a very preliminary uh look at the F Y twenty-four budget, uh mainly the uh. A request as they came from the uh um from the the various departments. Uh, so you know, obviously, Dr. Dawson and her team will need to uh uh you know, start looking at the budget request. One thing, though, that did uh. Did strike me, and it should shouldn't come to anybody's surprise, is is really. On the revenue side, and I think what we're going to see is we're going to have a revenue problem. And the main source of that revenue problem is going to be the out-of-district tuitions virtually trickling away to nothing, so. That's going to be, I think, one of our challenges uh this year as we go through the F Y twenty-four budget process is how do we uh? How do we deal with the revenues? How do we work with our member communities? Uh, you know, the uh preliminarily, the uh the assessments are some communities are going to. See some big jumps, so that is definitely going to be uh uh something we're all going to have to really, really look at uh. Hard and long, and um our subcommittee will. Be reviewing the budgets uh once Dr. Dawson and her team have uh have uh given their input on the requests. So uh I guess with that, I'm not sure if I'm turning it over to uh uh uh. Mr. Icannon or 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 Nikki in terms of of the items we need to vote for, but I will turn it over to one of them.
Thank you, Mr. Ladoo. What I want to thank and thank you, Mr. Everyone, I want to start off with the general fund. Item C, first quarter general fund report. In your packet, you will see a the general fund. Uh more for your information, but I want to identify two items that are in deficit. The twenty-three, twenty-seven substitute substitution long term, which is in deficit of thirty-two thousand seven hundred and three dollars. And the twenty-eight hundred psychological services of three thousand three hundred sixty-three thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. Um, I'm identifying them now, but they will be addressed in our next item, little uh D with budget transfers. So we can uh either entertain some questions now, or we can talk about it when we get to the budget transfers. Or on to any other question.
There are questions now, Jeff.
Well, the obvious question, I probably know the answer to it, is why are there deficits?
Okay, we'll address it now. Uh, first of all, the long-term substitution is because uh we had un-. Unanticipated medical leaves, or like unexpected medical leaves, so. We are using long-term subs in order to cover those leaves, so uh we will be utilizing. Um, some of the balances from those people who are out to uh fund that line item. And in the. Psychological services side, that is more of a reclassification of people that were be that were identified under guidance. And we're putting them in uh under psychological service and putting into. Guidance uh vice versa, um to re. To do. Uh, financial reporting it for the end of year report, so.
So that's 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 not a real deficit, then. That's just a recategorization of people whose. You're trying to match with what the state requires you to um categorize them.
Correct, but as you can see, it's a negative number, so the deficit in our book. So.
Thank you.
Other other questions at this point? Oh, then that's um. Um, shall we? Do you want to move on to the um? Um, uh, general fund budget transfer?
Yes, thank you, Miss North. Um, so the next item is uh the budget transfers that we were we are asking for. Um, there are five of them, and I'll go through each individual one for your uh for your your edification. Um, as you and as you know, per the policy, all budget transfers of ten thousand dollars or more are brought before the committee. Uh, first, uh, the finance committee, then the full committee for approval. The first transfer is to move forty thousand dollars from food services to three different accounts, specifically twelve-ten superintendent. Fourteen-fifty district-wide information management and twenty-two-ten school leadership, building and principal's office to cover unexpected expenditures. The second is to move forty-eight thousand from professional development support to two accounts, fourteen-fifty district-wide information management. And uh to cover additional hardware and forty-four hundred. But uh network and telecommunications to cover a number of co-op opportunities for our students inside the I T department. Third is for thirty-two thousand seven hundred and three dollars from classroom teachers to substitute substitutions. Long-term to cover unanticipated leaves. The next is for three hundred and sixty-three thousand nine hundred and ten dollars from guidance to psychological services. To cover the reclassification of positions of positions to adhere to financial reporting, specifically uh within the. Uh, the end-of-year reporting. Next was for twenty thousand dollars. From other non-employee insurances to other student activities. This this money, this will move money that was designated for to lease two buses or vans. Um, to be used to uh make repairs to the buses and and or vans that are owned by the district. The reason why the num- the monies are no longer needed for leasing is because of supply chain issues and our inability to secure. Uh, the two buses vans that we had um and. Re-receive them before the end of the fiscal year. And lastly, is to move twenty thousand dollars from maintenance of grounds to maintenance of buildings to cover an unanticipated. Expenses. Uh, we had two major issues um earlier this year. One was a we lost a compressor in a walk-in freezer. And then the other was we lost a uh um a heat pump. That was covering the I T department. Uh, we could not cool the uh the server room for them, so we had to replace it. So those are the five budget transfers that we are referring to, and we will be asking for the school committee to vote. To approve the first quarter general fund budget transfers as presented.
Uh, I'll move that. And the finance committee recommends.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Um, I am sure we have discussion, Jeff.
The uh the two um items that have broken, uh they're they're no longer under warranty, I take it then.
Correct, they were not, Mr. Stulven.
Warranty should be twenty years long, but I guess they're not, so that's life. I assume that the finance committee has examined this in detail and they um. I think that Steve authority mentions that they approve these transfers, so I'm all set. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay, let's do a roll call. Pam Nurse acting, yes?
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve will do Concord, yes.
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Alice Lucas, yes.
Uh, thank you very much. The next item is the revolving accounts, uh revolving funds. Um, they're in your packet. Uh, they're all in positive. There are no negative deficits in this. Just identify a couple of them. The community ed uh was primarily summer school this year, so we have a pretty good balance of twenty-one thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars. Uh, Dr. Who is uh talking about the M T I program and in the in the positive direction that they're moving in, so there's a positive balance there. We will no longer be contributing as uh Miss Miss Andrea didn't uh indicate in our finance committee uh from their general fund. Um, so. And the other one I'd like to point out is facility rentals. Um, that's positive, and we're anticipating. Um, we have some revenues as of the as of right now for the primarily from the athletic fields and some conference room. Uh rentals, and we anticipate a uh um going forth with. Some. About a hundred and one thousand dollars in revenue from the athletic fields and conference rooms going forth as well. We have some. Uh, big items coming up in the next uh six months or so with uh um. A theater group coming in, and obviously um we have some athletic teams that are using our fields as well, so. If there's any questions, I'll entertain them, or Mrs. Andrea can help out.
Sorry about that, Jeff.
I think that at some point, it's too early in the year to do this, but at some point later in the year, it would be useful to have a look, see as to. Uh, what our revenues are from the fields and other facilities here compared to what we had anticipated, say, several years ago when we're talking about this. It's literally in the air for that, but maybe, you know, in the spring. Um, that would be, I'd really like to see that report, how um the reality is matching our our wishful dreams.
Steve.
Yeah, uh uh I I think we agree, and and at the finance committee meeting, we we further recommended to try to. Break out each each rental so that we know what what's what the fields are bringing in versus rentals of of uh a meeting space, and so that we have. More of a line item to get a sense of where, you know, what what is bringing in the. The revenues, so we get a better feel of the impact of, let's say, the feels on the on the total revenue picture.
Alice.
I just wanted to say I like seeing world bee day on there. I mean, it's you you go through, it's like welding, electrical, blah, blah, blah. It's the usual. The usual things that you always see, and world bee day just jumps right out, and everyone's always excited about bees now, so. Thank you.
That jumped out for me, too. Ford.
Um, I always like to know what the revenue is when the for the rentals, and I think that's important, but I'd also like to know. What expenses we've incurred because of those rent uh rentals, so I think it's important that we know that, so we know what the net is.
Good point. Other comments, questions? Okay.
Thank you. Uh, moving on uh to student activities. Uh, last year, our student activity accounts were audited as part of our annual audit. And they came back with recommendations that we review all the accounts. Through this process, we identified that the that the advisor for each student activity uh and added them to the uh to the um. The report. We also identified any accounts that had no activity in some time or basically inactive accounts. These uh inactive accounts would be dissolved, and all remaining funds would be transferred into the general student activity account. This account is used to benefit all students, and this account would also be overseen by the principal. This requires a vote of the school committee uh which will be requested tonight. Uh, secondly, uh we they also identified any um specifically the robotics and the first robotics lines to be combined. Um, the robotics line of three thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars. Uh, came about as donations um in a previous um iteration of the robotics. Uh, club, and now that we're utilizing uh or under the first robotics, that we'd like to transfer the monies from robotics. From the robotics account into first robotics. Um, this will. Be able to have those funds utilized by by that for that process. And finally, we identified any new accounts, and this time we only have one, the class of twenty-twenty-six. Um, and we'll be asking for you to re. Prove that as well. So I don't know.
Yeah, so I got sorry, I was just going to move to approve. We're done, Rich. Sorry about that.
No problem. I was uh I was gonna, I was, I think you were anticipating my uh my next question, Mr. Ladoo. I don't know if you want to approve them each each one individual or as we did in the finance committee.
Yeah, I mean, I I would recommend we we approve all three. Uh, the finance committee uh recommends all three, and we actually. Prove them all in one vote as well.
So moved.
Okay, so. Thank you. So it's been um. Moved and seconded to um approve the uh the three uh votes under student activities. Fund um as listed in the on the agenda. Um, any? Any further discussion? Okay, Pam Nurse acting, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve will do Concord, yes.
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes.
Jeff still in need of, yes.
Alice Lucas, yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, we covered the prior year invoice approval on the consent agenda. Um, do we have the list of monthly grants? Because you were and monthly donations, because you're right, Jeff, that they. I must have been dreaming them.
Um, you missed North, the I the grant is it's a very small piece of it, so I mean, it was it was buried on one page, and it's. Less than a half half inch uh of of verbiage, so you probably missed it. Um, but it we are asking that uh the school committee vote to approve the Perkins grant that we receive annually. And the amount that we were approved, we were. Awarded was two hundred and eighteen thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars. And this will cover salary stipend, supplies and materials and travel uh within the C T E. Realm.
Uh, do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Question. Jeff.
How does this uh compare with previous years' Perkins grants? Do they go up? Do they go down? Do they go sideways?
I'm going to defer to Miss Bouchard for that because she is has a better understanding of that.
Sure, so it fluctuates. Uh, last year, we had about a hundred and ninety thousand. Uh, we've also had schedule A's, which is um other towns that had Perkins. Dollars that they're able to allocate towards us, so we had increases those years, uh but it's also based on our enrollment, so it does tend to fluctuate.
Thank you.
Alice.
Um, I just can't find the half-inch place on the anywhere in the pack, and I'm sorry.
Alice, it's right after the uh the invoices from a prior year, right after the Amazon invoice, right after that.
Thank you.
So our page number?
Uh, no.
In the future, we will work to make these stand out.
Oh. Okay, I see it now.
Oh, I I. Oh, there it is.
Just before the minutes.
Right.
Okay, um, now we we did we? I'm sorry, that totally lost me, so we have a motion on the table. We have not voted yet, right? Let's move to vote. So Pam Nurse acting, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve will do Concord, yes.
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes.
Jeff still in need of, yes.
Alice Lucas, yes.
Okay, and then the um um list of monthly donations. Can you tell us that?
I can, and I did I did not, and I've been conferring with Mr. Andrew about this, but we can't, it's not in either one of the packages we saw. Um, so uh and that's probably an oversight in our on 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 our behalf. Um, we have a donation of fifteen hundred dollars from an anonymous donor to the Hall of Fame. So if if it's applicable and amendable, we'd like to approve the list of monthly donations as presented.
So moved.
Any discussion? Okay. Uh, Alice.
Just as a procedural thing, since it's not in the agenda. Uh, or anywhere in the documents, we should amend that. We should append that to the minutes, I think. That the actual information, yeah. Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, um Pam Nurse acting, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve will do Concord, yes.
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes.
Jeff still in need of, yes.
Alice Lucas, yes.
Okay, then, thank you very much. Anything else under finance?
Nope.
Nope, that's it, okay. Okay, so next I'd like to entertain a motion to enter executive session. Well, um, the agenda says to return. Well, um, the agenda says to return to open session, is that correct, or is it not to return to open session?
Wish, there's no need for us to return. So, please pardon if that says to return, there's no need to return.
Okay, so the motion is to enter executive session and not to return. To open session for the following reason. To conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. Or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Namely, the assistant superintendent, assistant superintendent of operations and facilities. Attending would be, um, school committee, Dr. Dawson and Miss. Um, and I don't have Julia's name in front, and Julia.
Miss Persegna, yeah.
I need to look at it. Oh, so could I have that motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? Pam Nurse acting, yes?
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes?
Steve will do conquered, yes?
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes?
Jeff still in need of, yes?
Alice Lucas, yes.
Okay, so we will leave this Zoom and, um, recon, um, being on the Zoom that was sent out for the executive session. So thank you, everyone.
And for the two student reps, congratulations on your first school committee meeting. Great job for sticking it through, um, just so you know, uh, procedurally, so this is where, um, just as Miss Nurse, um, described, we're gonna go into closed session, so that means you can. Leave the meeting and you don't have to, you can. Go to bed or do homework or whatever else you need to do, and we'll see you tomorrow at school.
Thank you, Dr. Dawson.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you, everyone.